For the Safety Center in terms of the money the city traditionally has put in there, and kind of makes me wonder where all the partners have gone. And again, so this is more about how we're prepping up the sustainability of things like this. And so I appreciate it. It's not a knock on the motion, but exactly that kind of thing I probably would have supported if it had been made a budget markup.
Councilmember Conno?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say as the council member representing the Midtown Safety Center that they have not come forward to ask me for funding for this particular project. And I just want to state that for the public record because I know that you're bringing that up. And I'm glad that whoever spoke to you spoke to you. It's unfortunate that they never made it in my direction as the elected official from that area. I will say that the L.A. City Council passed a Green Zones policy this week, and they are making a great impact on their communities when it comes to cleaning up the air, empowering the people of the neighborhoods to really organize again and lift up their voices around environmental justice, addressing environmental racism in their communities. And lastly, I just feel so trapped by this game where people of color have to compete against one another for resources. I think that's a false paradigm that we have to challenge, and I think that there is enough for everybody to go around. And I just don't believe in this, like, let's put, you know, youth training programs for Roosevelt High School students against their own families who live in the Phillips neighborhood who can't breathe and are developing asthma. So I disagree with that, and I wish you had worked with me to figure out a better solution for this.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to share or echo the sentiment of some of my colleagues. You know, I think that this is a great program. The Community Experts Program is excellent. I want to see more money go into it. I also believe strongly in Green Zones and making sure we have allocations there to fund that effort. And I wish I would have known about this particular motion sooner because I had the fire chief in my office a couple of days ago, and he did not mention a need for more money for this. He was actually very excited about what's already going on. And I acknowledge that this benefits Ward 12 because Roosevelt is there, and I care deeply about our students in the community, and I want to see them have this opportunity. And so if it passes, it's a great opportunity for the students or a further opportunity. But I, it's one of those tough choices. I won't be supporting it because I do want to support the Green Zone funding. But I hope we can find more funding for this program in future allocations. And I appreciate that, you know, there is a strong interest for these kind of programs and supporting them.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Worsami and Yang's amendment? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
No.
Conno?
No.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
No.
Glidden?
No.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are eight ayes and five nays. That amendment passes. Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion, staff directive in front of you with Councilmember Yang. This staff directive, I'll read it, and then I'd like to speak to it. The directive is directing the city coordinator's office to work with pertinent staff to create a racial equity website aimed at both external and internal stakeholders that will, one, create a central repository of best practices for city staff to use in defining policy and procedures through a racial equity lens, including racial equity work in other jurisdictions, locally and nationally, to foster learning and to build upon lessons learned by others tackling similar challenges. Two, provide training and other self-study resources to aid staff in deepening individual understanding of cultural intelligence, race, and equity. Three, promote existing city equity efforts to enable enterprise-level collaboration and sharing of lessons learned. Four, providing access to department-level and citywide racial equity plans as available. Five, create a dashboard of progress against department-level goals for racial equity and inclusion. And six, provide access to data that residents can use to explore equity-related issues.
Councilmember Johnson has moved the staff directive. Would you like to speak to it?
I would, thank you. I'm happy to bring this forward. This is something that I worked with the city coordinator's office on, that they are supportive of, that will really help address something that's frequent. I get asked the question a lot from constituents, what are you working on around racial equity? And I speak to what I'm working on, but there's a whole lot that the city is working on in terms of initiatives. And I think having a central repository where we can have transparency around that, and then also not only talk about timelines and what the specific outcomes are, but to actually have the follow-up where residents can go and see, okay, what happened from this initiative? What are the results? How much progress are we making? It's incredibly important to have that transparency and that accountability, and that's why I support the motion and hope all of you do as well.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much, and I think that this motion is consistent with a lot of the work that I've been trying to do for a couple of years, and I appreciate it, and I will support this. The one thought I have looking at this, because it's reminiscent of, I mean, this is creating a website, so there'll be a tool that everybody can go to and see, and I think that's a great idea. One of the things that I have learned, sometimes it helps with staff directions, if we put a timeline on it, or when we expect this to be done, or at least to get a report back. And so I don't know if you had a chance to talk to the city coordinator's office about what was reasonable, or even IT, about getting this kind of work done, but something to think about if we could at least expect to get something in the second quarter of next year, or a report back at the end of the first quarter on the progress. I think it would give us some reassurance, and then we could help hold ourselves accountable. I think we even heard at the public hearing about one staff direction we gave about the downtown East Commons and the agreement we had, and how we gave a staff direction, and sometimes they just, even when we have a deadline, it doesn't come back. So I don't, I'm not prepared to propose a deadline right now, but I'm talking for a little while longer so that maybe the authors can think about what they heard back from the coordinator, and what they think might be reasonable to put a deadline on that. But I'd like to support this, and I'd like to see the work get done quickly, and then it's something we can certainly build upon and work on.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam President. This did not come up in the budget markup. I talked to Councilmember Andrew Johnson as late as yesterday, and he did not mention it to me. But I think it's a great thing to do, and I completely support it. And there are often times when we get feedback from people about the importance of doing things, and we do them. It doesn't always follow a neat process. So I don't want it to be, well, if it's something I like, it has to be in advance, and if it's something you like, it doesn't. I think this is a good thing to do. I also completely agree with Councilmember Gordon. For this to be meaningful at all, it has to have a timeline for a report back so that it just doesn't get lost in the shuffle of staff directions, and I'm open to whatever timeline the authors would like.
Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. My first comment is, you know, with regards to racial equity work that we've been doing, I think it's time to bring it out of the dark. And so the transparency that Councilmember Johnson is talking about makes a lot of sense. And I'm going to offer a friendly amendment, hopefully with Councilmember Johnson's approval, that I just want to add the language, directing the city coordinator's office to work with pertinent staff to create a racial equity website by the third quarter of 2016. So that's the new language on their AMG, all the things that are here. And so just the third quarter of 2016 to give us a report or to be done with the website by then.
Councilmember Yang has added an amendment to the staff direction for a report by the third quarter of 2016. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries back to the amendment then. Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I share Councilmember Goodman's sentiment that this is an excellent amendment. It wasn't introduced earlier, but this process, as she said, is sometimes messy. And, you know, as we talk about, obviously, there is at times a serious communications gap between our communities and what we're doing here at City Hall. And my hope is that this website, which I'm assuming will be part of the city's overarching website, but just kind of a separate tab, will facilitate some of that engagement. So hopefully, the next time around, that when we're doing this budget process, this nouveau website will help.
Councilmember Glidden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. I'll say, kind of give confidence to this idea. One is, I'll say, it doesn't have a budget allocation attached to it. It's a staff direction. Second is, it's an item that has been in the work plan of the Communications Department for some time. And so I do appreciate Councilmember Johnson kind of taking an action to prod that work forward and make sure that it happens. And so I think that's another thing that makes it familiar. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That amendment is adopted. Councilmember Frye, you had an amendment?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I do, and the amendment is to direct city staff to identify and reallocate a vacant FTE to the office of city clerk for an analyst position to provide management, policy, and fiscal support to the city council and its committees. And if I may speak briefly on this item.
Why don't you go ahead?
And this is also a fairly last-minute item as well. But seeing some of the issues that we on the council were going through in the last couple of days, I do feel that it would be exceedingly helpful to have financial, fiscal, and policy support from someone that would be specifically devoted to the council. I feel like it would decrease the number of miscommunications that we're having internally, and I feel that it will ultimately improve the policy that emanates from the council itself.
Okay, Councilmember Frye has made his amendment. Councilmember Gordon has seconded. Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Well, I had several questions about this one. I thought, actually, the clerk had all of its requested budget items funded in the mayor's budget. I may have not remembered that correctly, but so I maybe looked about the clerk and the mayor. I'd like to know if this was a requested position that wasn't funded, and if we could hear a little bit more about that. The second one is, it's just worded maybe a little bit unusually, and I'm not sure what it means to identify a vacant position. It doesn't say where the vacant position would be taken from. Is this like an enterprise-wide request? I don't know if Ms. Christensen has seen the motion. You have not seen the motion. You're happy to take a look at mine, but I need to help reviewing the motion. And the question to you is, I want to make, I want to, I'm not sure I understand what that means. It's, I mean, if there's vacant positions, they're allocated for departments to fill. I'm just a little bit unclear, unless there's a vacant position in the clerk's office within, and if so, then the clerk has the ability to fill that position.
Council President Johnson, Council Vice President Glidden, and other council members, typically, when a position is to be reallocated, there's a definition of where it's reallocated from and where it's reallocated to. It's not clear specifically in this motion that where the vacant position would be currently budgeted. Each department that has a position allocated to it has a budget associated with that position. So identifying where the vacancy exists would be necessary in order to reallocate the position as well as the dollars associated with that position. And certainly, there are at any given point in time within the city vacant positions across the board, any number of functions. So I'm not exactly clear on where it might come from. That could possibly be identified later.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon?
So I wonder if this is something we could do later, when we do, when we see if there's some rollover funds or something like that, and we can talk about this position more. Maybe this is a little bit premature, since we haven't identified, it seems like, the positions. That's just a thought that I have.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. I guess I'm a little confused because, okay, so this seems to be an ongoing FTE in the clerk's office, and therefore, if you were taking an FTE from another department, wouldn't that be an ongoing position that had been eliminated? So you're saying we need to identify which position in the city enterprise would be eliminating in order to support an ongoing new position within the clerk's office? Then I'm not sure I've totally heard what the position description is.
Council President Johnson, Councilmember Bender, a reallocation of a position means that a position in one department is gone in lieu of adding it elsewhere. So I guess that there would need to be an identification of which department was going to no longer have a position in order to reallocate it to the city clerk.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are numerous cities, including the city of St. Paul, that have council support for policy and fiscal analysis. We do not have that. And so it's very difficult for folks who are working on big-picture policy issues, and that might be anyone here, to get information they need that is not biased or spun in one direction or another. We used to have the Management Analysis Division. I think only Council President Johnson and I remember that, which was an independent department within the city that did analysis on policy positions, especially as it pertains to the budget. It's become very obvious that some of the information we get is spun in one direction or another, and we think we need someone in the clerk's office to be doing some budget analysis, but also policy analysis on various different kinds of policy issues that come forward. Personally, if it were me, I would take it out of the rollover contingency for one year, see how it goes, and then ask for a permanent FTE next time. So that might be a more or less comfortable position. I thought I heard Councilmember Gordon say perhaps it was part of the rollover. So I'm supportive of doing it as part of the rollover or contingency for year one, and see if we can model a position like they have in the city of St. Paul for their city council, like they have in Seattle, or many other cities that have similar policy positions. I think some of these departments have more than one. The suggestion here was just to have one and see what the workload was.
Councilmember Glidden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. You know, it's an interesting idea. I will say, to me, it needs a lot more prepping up. It seems more appropriate to propose for next year's budget. I don't even understand how this would qualify for rollover, actually. It's a new idea, and those are usually not the kinds of things that go for the rollover dollars under our financial policies. I think there are a lot of questions, too, about just what kind of position, and is it needed? I don't think that St. Paul council staff have the same staff allocations that we do, and so we're kind of going to get into that back and forth. Who would the person report to? How are they going to allocate their time? Is this a lawyer? Because if a person is doing policy analysis, I know our city attorney might have concern about when you're seeming to give a legal opinion. Is that something where the person then needs to work with the city attorney's office? So anyway, just started to throw out a bunch, but I do think it's an idea that is worth more thought, but then that means it needs more thought and might be more appropriate for next year's budget.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All fair points from all of my colleagues. The purpose of leaving it somewhat ambiguous was allowing staff to then come forward with ideas, whether it be from rollover, which, as Councilmember Glidden states, is difficult, or contingency funding, which could be funded through the contingency funding at whatever figure it is for this year. And then we can evaluate how the position has functioned for the following. And, you know, as I said, you know, dealing with some of these issues at a last-minute timeframe is actually a reason why this would work well. But all points are taken from my colleagues.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Frye's amendment?
No.
Seeing none, clerk call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Bender?
I'm sorry. Maybe this is stupid. Did we identify the FTE that we're cutting in order to do this?
Councilmember Bender, we could ask staff to come back to us with a list of vacant positions, if that was something that the council would like to consider, and identify it. We also could use one-time dollars, as people have suggested, to fund this position. Doesn't need to be decided today. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon?
No.
Conno?
No.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
No.
Glidden?
No.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Nay.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are eight ayes and five nays.
That amendment passed. Any further amendments? Seeing none, the clerk call, I'm sorry, one more? Sorry? That, I do believe, Councilmember Reich has amendment on Ms. Christensen, if you can help me, on the capital programs. We should deal with that amendment during the capital program, right? I'm sorry. I think I'm right. Yeah. Is it, Mr. Carl? Mr. Carl, we have a amendment for the capital program, so we should deal with that during the capital program, correct? Okay. With that, we have dispensed with the appropriation resolution as amended. So the clerk will call the roll on the adoption of the resolution fixing, I'm sorry, Councilmember Goodman? Worsami? Councilmember Worsami?
Yeah, I want to speak on the main motion. And I have comments regarding some of the things that have been said today, which I, you know, I support the community coming out. I support what everybody said. And I don't believe there is any place for racism, and any place for white supremacy, and any place for bigotry. And we've seen, even in the news today, a man who's running for the President of the United States wants to bar a world religion from entering the United States. You know, Donald Trump's white supremacy is, you know, it's just one of the most amazing things I've ever seen in my entire life. And I have lived in many different places and many different areas. I was a refugee. I have been an immigrant. I am black, and I am Muslim, and I'm poor. And my father never left me anything, and my family never left me anything, and everything that I have earned, I have earned through hard work and through being where I am. Now, when I came to City Hall, when I came to City Hall, my priority for my constituents, from the people who elected me, was jobs, jobs, and jobs. It was the poverty in my community that has inspired me to be here and to come to this office. And we are legislators. We make legislation. That is our job. And some of my colleagues have spoken a great game. They've talked about equity, but they have not presented much in terms of legislation. In this 2016 budget, and I will thank the mayor, who put these recommendations that I put through for my constituents, for my ward, and for the inner-city young, black, and colored individuals who live in our city, including my children, I have put forth a number of recommendations that I would like you to pass today. One is the creation of an opportunity hub to be created in Cedar Riverside. What does an opportunity hub mean? It means a hub where young men and women from my community can go so they can be trained. It's not a workforce center. It's a skills development center. It has never been created before, and we're partnering with the county. We're partnering with the state. I've knocked on the state's door. I've knocked on the county's door. And what I've asked for is the creation of this center so that my youth, the youth who elected me, whose parents knocked on doors for me, who raised money for me, can be trained. And this is a promise that I made them when I ran for office. Why? Because unemployment in Minneapolis, in Hennepin County, for white Americans, is 4% to 3%. And for my community, it's 22%. And this is what I'm tackling, through legislation, not through rhetoric, through legislation, the creation of this hub. And the mayor worked with me to appropriate $100,000 as a seed money for the hub. The county's putting money in. MCTC's putting money in. The state is putting money in, and hopefully, we'll get this off the ground. The second thing is, my ward is 85% renters. 85% renters. And we have problems with landlords and tenants' rights. And we put $100,000, again, to Home Line, and I'm supporting this, and my colleague, Lisa Bender, also helped me with this last year, to tackle this issue. We've also put down $20,000 for community education program, targeted at East African elders, seniors. We've also put down $50,000 for youth development, targeting the Somali community for a 4-H program, for after-school program that develops the STEM, especially math, in our youths. And about 30 youths will be able to benefit from this. We put $42,000 for the program that I mentioned at Roosevelt High, that my colleagues were talking about. Yes, Roosevelt High is in Ward 12, but many students are from Ward 6. We also put $20,000 for the first time, a public awareness program for autism, again, targeting the Somali community because we have a high rate of autism program. We have a high rate of autism issues. We also put $20,000 for a Public Works bike, bike, ped education. We have all these bike infrastructure in Minneapolis, but many people from my community don't, haven't had the training. So we put that down as well. And we've also supported Councilmember Goodman's amendment to increase the affordable housing to $10 million for 2016. So again, we are legislators. We'll be measured on what we legislate, what goodies we can bring to our constituencies, and how we are dealing with the needs that they have through our elections. And this is what I've tried to do, to the best of my ability, is to legislate and to present actual programs that tackle the unemployment and underemployment in my community. Actual programs, not theoretical issues, but actual programs that develop the skills that allows individuals to get into programs. Another thing that I'm working on, and I work hard for, is to defend small business. My community is one of the largest creators of small business in the city of Minneapolis. And we know there are legislations coming, such as scheduling, and other legislations, that could harm these small businesses, and I have to be attentive to them. Because if these small businesses go out of business, if these grocery stores, the halal grocery stores, and the restaurants get out of business, I don't think the city of Minneapolis is going to employ all those people that will be unemployed. So again, my decisions are made with the lens of my constituencies, with the lens of Ward 6, providing jobs, protecting small business, making sure that we create enough wealth, that we become homeowners, and we become part of this society. And that's what I fight for, and that's why I support this budget, and the recommendation is made. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Conno?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the community for coming out tonight. I want to thank you for being here and changing the course of where these decisions were going to go tonight. Thank you. I used to, I used to work for a council member, and I don't remember things being so tough back then. I'm in city council now. Things feel tough. But please know that we are in that friction, that space of friction that's creating the change that our ancestors have called for, that our communities are calling for. I know it's hard. I know it's tough, but we have to keep doing it. Please know that justice is on our side, truth is on our side, love is on our side. Thank you for being here. Thank you for sacrificing.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, you're... Councilmember, Councilmember Andrew Johnson? Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say thanks for everyone who came out, no matter what your opinions are. You know, we're not going to always agree with everything. We're going to agree with a lot of things. And I just appreciate, though, that democracy can be noisy and loud and feisty, and also incredibly important to moving our city and our community forward. And I'm happy to be a part of a couple of motions tonight on racial equity. I know we have a lot more work to do. There's a lot of work underway, and I want to recognize a lot of that work is outside of City Hall and happening in the community, whether that's our nonprofit organizations, whether that's just community matters. whether that's just community members through their volunteering, through their work. I also really want to thank the mayor for something in the budget, specifically, the restorative justice is being tripled. And I want to recognize you for that, and thank you for your partnership on that. It's incredible, incredible programs that are helping keep kids who, everyone makes mistakes, keep their records clean so that they don't get sucked into a system that just sets them up for failure and makes life so hard. And obviously, with all the disparities with arrests and records, ultimately, is hurting our people of color in our city. So I think that's incredible work. I'd love to see us do even more around that. And, you know, I've said it before, and I maybe don't say it enough, but I'll say it again at this, after this, because of this process, but Black Lives Matter.
Thank you, Madam President. I think sometimes, I also wanted to thank everyone who came to speak, and I think sometimes these smaller changes in the scope of the billion-dollar budget, they get a lot of attention. And I think sometimes we seem more divided as a body than we really are. And so I just wanted to say that this budget, more than a billion-dollar budget, has a lot of things that I think really reflect the shared values of this council and our mayor, and I really want to thank Mayor Hodges for her leadership in making significant investments in a lot of things that my constituents care a lot about. This budget has a lot of investments in racial equity, a huge millions of dollars for restorative justice, to reform our police department. It has $200,000 to enforce the paid sick time ordinance that I hope we will pass early next year. Um...